March. Good morning, welcome to the March 18th Board of Supervisors meeting. We will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Jill, could you start us?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It appears that District Four Supervisor Heidi Carpenter-Harris will be a little late this morning, so we will begin without her, and I'm sure she'll be here shortly. Our first presentation is from C A O. Receive a presentation from each district supervisor on a consultant from their district in recognition of Women's History Month.
Thank you Chair, I'll kind of introduce this and I'll turn it back over to the board, but this idea came out of our P I O area. And just to run through a little bit of the history with Women's History Month. Back in 1978, Sonoma County, as part of the Education Task Forces, Sonoma County Commission of the Status of Woman recognized March 8th as International Women's Day. And then in 1980, President Jimmy Carter made the first presidential proclamation designating the week of March 8th as National Women's History Week. And then in 1987, Congress passed Public Law 100-9, designating March as Women's History Month. So locally, what we're going to do today is provide an opportunity for each of the supervisors to recognize a woman from their district in recognition of the National Women's History Month. So I'll turn it back over to you, and my recommendation is we just go through each of the districts, 1 through 5, and allow that recognition to happen.
Very good, so we will start out today with District One Supervisor.
Okay, thank you. This was a difficult task, not because of trying to find someone who fit the bill, but trying to whittle down, because there are a number of women who have made huge impact in District One over the years. So today, the person I am honoring was not able to be here because of another commitment, but Katie Quinn has lived in Lewiston for just around 30 years. And in that time, and I have whittled this down as much as I could to fit within our hopefully limited time here, we didn't want to stretch this out too long. During her time here, she started and managed the Lewiston D. Litterbugs, the Lewiston Sparkies, and managed the Lewiston Neighborhood Watch, all for decades. The Litterbugs, D. Litterbugs, besides cleaning up the roads in Lewiston and along 299, had the most successful American Cancer Society's Relay for Life efforts during their tenure and brought in over $100,000 in 10 years. She joined the Red Cross Lewiston Disaster Action Team and locally taught CPR and first aid, plus deployed on four national disasters, starting with Hurricane Katrina, ending with wildfires in San Diego. She authored 40 successful grants, earned over $200,000 for various community projects, including new flooring and storage for the schoolhouse library, a new van for the food pantry, but primarily these were for the Lewiston Fire Department. She co-wrote the narratives on several FEMA grants and raised over $900,000, which allowed for the purchase of a new engine, as well as a mobile oxygen machine for multiple fire departments. She project managed the Lewiston Deer Meadow Disc Golf Course from start to finish, involving community donors, the work efforts from the Trinity River Conservation Camp, and various grants to complete the project. And when asked her favorites, she said completion of the Lewiston Fire Station in 2018, a personal project that she worked on for 14 years from start to finish, renovation of the old community gym into a two-court pickleball facility. I happen to know she loves pickleball. And she says that sign-in logs show that over 100 players are there each month, and turned the front of the Lewiston Community Center into a prolific botanical garden that is now over 20 years old. So I pulled that back from everything I was able to gather about what Katie Quinn has been able to contribute to our community in her 30 years here. And she hasn't, she's backing off, but she absolutely has not stopped. So I'm thrilled to honor her in this opportunity, and I look forward to bringing her certificate to her personally.
Thank you very much. District Two, and Jill.
While there are many women in District Two who also would be deserving of such a moment, it didn't take me even 60 seconds to come up with my choice. Today I wish to honor Serena Brown. Communities thrive when individuals commit themselves to fostering unity, support, and progress. Serena Brown is one such individual whose dedication and service have made a lasting impact on her community. For over 40 years, Serena has called Trinity County home. Raised in a close-knit family that valued community service, she grew up watching her father, John Hall, serve on the Junction City Fire Department before becoming a paramedic with the local ambulance service. Inspired by his example, Serena followed in his footsteps, volunteering with the Weaverville Fire Department and later becoming a paramedic with the same ambulance company. Together, father and daughter dedicated themselves to serving their community, embodying the spirit of selflessness and commitment. Serena's journey is one of perseverance and determination. Putting herself through college, she earned a business degree while balancing her deep commitment to public service. Her resilience was further tested when she faced and triumphed over a life-threatening battle with cancer. Despite being told she would never have children, she defied the odds and raised a strong, community-driven daughter, who now carries forward her mother's values and commitment to the fire department and medical as well. Serena has been a tireless advocate for strength in emergency response services in Trinity County. She has continuously sought ways to integrate the Weaverville Fire Department into the community, ensuring it remains a pillar of safety and support. Thanks to her relentless efforts, she has secured hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding, providing critical resources that enhance the department's ability to serve. Beyond funding, she's played a pivotal role in preserving the department's history, updating museum archives, and ensuring proper documentation. She also helped establish the Weaverville Fire Department Mental Health Awareness Program and the Carcinogenic Reduction Program, recognizing the need to support first responders, both physically and emotionally. Serena has made it a priority to invest in the youth of the community. A passionate mentor, she has worked tirelessly to support the next generation, helping them become successful adults who go on to serve their communities. She's been a driving force in our local Girl Scout community and a dedicated advocate for the Future Farmers of America program at the high school. Through scholarship, the Explorer Program, and career mentorship, she has helped shape the futures of countless individuals. Her ability to recognize potential and nurture it has resulted in young adults stepping into leadership roles with confidence and purpose. Serena's leadership is defined by initiative, vision, and an unwavering belief in community strength. She has been instrumental in securing grants such as Fire Prevention, CAL FIRE RFC, and Trinity Trust, all of which have directly improved safety and services. She has also contributed to the department's success by attending vital training, ensuring compliance with evolving regulations, and assisting with fundraising efforts that sustain critical programs. Her story is a testament to the impact one person can make through dedication, resilience, and service. Serena Brown's legacy is one of leadership, strength, and a relentless pursuit of bettering her community. Serena, I honor you for your accomplishments and more importantly, for the values you have instilled in our community. Thank you for sharing with our communities the values that define the very best of Trinity County.
Okay, thank you very much. It will be my turn, District Three. And as Rick said earlier, I thought this would be a tough decision or a tough choice to make. And as I called around Hayfork, it became pretty evident it was not that tough at all. So my choice became pretty evidently clear, not longing to be looking after this. So my choice is Charlene Dunuts from Hayfork. Charlene's family moved to Hayfork from Southern California in August 1979. Her daughters were in school and she became active in their activities, 4H and FFA. They raised puppies for guide dogs for the blind at La San Rafael. They raised age puppies, socialized, and obedience before they were trained by the professionals. She started work at Trinity Hospital in 1980 and worked for several years with Ralph Modine to obtain a physician in Hayfork. She also worked for the community to organize first the nurses and then all of the county workers for purse. Charlene joined Rotary in 2000 and was president for two years and is still on the Board of Directors. She's also on the Board Directors of Hayfork High School Foundation, Hayfork Community Center, where she still has an office. As Hirsch, and she owned Kingsbury Mobile Home Park and still owns Highway 3 Storage Units and is on the Board of Trinity Trust that helps people and organizations in Trinity County. Where she actively works to obtain money for Hayfork for their summer youth programs. She's also on the Board of Hayfork Chamber of Commerce, where they are launching a cannabis culture tourism brand. And just to let you know how active she still is. She told me after I read that I needed to read this, and I will. And speaking of Rotary and scholarships, the Hayfork Rotary Club is having a fundraising dinner for their scholarships. They award three granting students every year on Saturday, April 5th. At 6:00 PM at the Trinity County Fairgrounds, Don Ingle. Inquire for scholarships, and she also gave me some handouts, so if you need those, we have those today. So her work is still ongoing. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. District Four, Heidi Carpenter-Harris.
I'm so excited. When we had the opportunity to make this decision, it was like a flash. I knew in a moment that my outstanding women in my district would be Sadie Fagan. And I just, oh gosh, I started asking around the community. I knew you were a busy lady, but I started asking around the community for, you know, different pieces of information from folks. And holy smokes, lady, you're everywhere. I just want to say thank you first and foremost for that. I also want to recognize your family for all of the cookies they didn't get to eat because they were on the counter for the football games or what have you. And I know that there's a price to pay on your body. You get tired, I'm sure, and work past tired. And I just want to say thank you from the depths of my heart for all that you do. For those of you who may not know. Shall we try this one? It's all gonna do it. Do we need to turn it off, start again?
Do you have anything on your computer there?
All the microphones.
Mode or anything?
Charlene, would you like to come up and fix this?
Want me to turn it off?
Turn down the volume.
Go ahead and try again.
How are we doing now? Is that better? That's fixed now? Okay, great. I just will say, my first exposure to the dynamic Sadie was when our daughters were in high school together, and she was in charge of the Boosters Club at the time. And it was almost impossible to find her because she was always everywhere at the same time. But I just want to say that was my first encounter with you. Our girls played ball together. For... I know, but I want to really bad.
I could say anything too. I do have a fundraiser April 4th. We were raising money for scholarships for Trinity High School. A lot of really great silent auction projects. And our state bringing the president from the auction. If you're not in Hayfork, come on down to Trump's and say, "We're happy to..."
We'll try. Maybe say, "Don't get her away," she won't have to do or say really quick, "This is not working." Be right, has to be through the system. What if I leave? No. Still kicking back. Again? No, it's still doing it. Is that going to be okay with everyone?
We can hear you online, even though that thing's flashing, we can hear you.
Well, I'll just be quick, since the... Help, thank you, not just from my seat, but from all of the parents whose kids you help get across the road safely every day with your enthusiastic outfits. And I'll just say thank you for all the people you helped get wood for and all of the people you helped get meals for. And just your enthusiasm in life every day is a blessing to all of us. And as you mentioned, you don't want me to mention all of these wonderful things I have written down because I don't want to embarrass you, but the true thank you, Sadie. I know that you matter to so many people, and your community's response to my choice with you was illuminating. So I know that it was a good, it was a good choice. So thank you for everything that you've done.
They can have their own. Oh man, there's nothing I wouldn't do for the kids of our town.
We know, we see you dressed up like dinosaurs.
And take your ravel. I honestly don't do anything that I don't want to do. I do it because I love our, you know, some of the greatest kids. And we raise some of the greatest humans here, and they just, they give back. Serena's one of them. We were both raised here, grew up here. There's so many business members, owners, workers, teachers that live here, grew up here, and who are giving back. So it's very nice, very honored, you know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Sadie, thank you. I've known you for a long, long time. I coached your son in Little League, my son, your son, same age. I guarantee you set this up though, so you could hear this stuff twice. I know that. That is true, thank you. District Five.
Do we need to pause?
And thank you Trent and Steph for bringing this up today. This is a really wonderful thing that we're doing. When I started this, looking for somebody, there was one person that just shined. And I'm pretty sure that she's an angel straight from God. She really is. She is the first person on scene. When a tragedy happens, she is there with food, with encouragement, with clothing, with whatever anybody needs. She's a wonderful mother to her own children, but to all of ours too. She's in the cattle business, she works with her husband every day, in the sleep, the rain, delivering those wonderful, beautiful calves that I drive by every day. She's completely involved in rodeo and cattle association. She is one person that the whole community goes to when they need something. She's always there, she's very selfless, and we love her. She is, with all the children coming up the pike and all the women, she is a wonderful example to everybody. And she shines every day. She puts herself last all the time. And she served her county on the grand jury. She also supplies commodities to the people that need them in our community. She sets up all the events, she organizes the malls, she's a legendary cook for everything we do, and we love her dearly. She is family like all of the other ranchers and community members in our District Five. And we thank you very much, we honor you, Shelley, today.
Testing, testing.
We could hear that. We couldn't hear the end of the last report, though.
We tried turning down the speaker.
Hey everyone, how's it going? Well, it's Ash, Channel Dylan here. We have a major bombshell today.
Someone needs to unmute.
Okay, five minutes, we'll come back at 32.
Testing. Test, test, test. 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 Test.
That's not too bad.
Test. Test. Testing. How does this sound online?
Loud and clear.
Sounds good.
Okay. And that's not too, I mean, it is echoey, but.
It is echoey.
Yeah. That we hear internally. I couldn't hear that.
It sounds echoey at the end now.
Okay. Test, test. Test, test, test. Is that all right? Test, test.
Sounds fine.
Oh, you want my phone number?
Test, 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 test. Yeah, okay, let's just go.
I'm going as fast as I can. Podium?
Test, test, test. Okay.
Okay, let's, uh, we off. All right, let's, let's continue on then till we get this fixed. The next thing up is a presentation from Heidi McHugh. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
Hello, Trinity County. Hello, Trinity County. I, I mean, I would love to face the public queue, but I think I need to. I also, unlike you, I still hold for our award winner from earlier. She said she doesn't need a microphone to recognize that. At any rate, so I am Heidi McHugh. I am the field representative for your new assembly member, Chris Rogers, who was just selected last November. We are very excited to be in Trinity County because we take very seriously the representation of these far north rural communities that I personally have the pleasure of representing, which is Del Norte Trinity and Humboldt Counties. And we understand that it has often felt, we feel like we're forgotten in this parts of California. In Humboldt County since nineteen ninety-nine. So, I do understand that feeling that we just don't seem to be as regarded as Mendocino and Sonoma Counties, particularly Sonoma, which are part of this giant district that we all share one representative in the assembly for. But we are proud to actually recognize how important our rural communities are and how much attention rural communities need. Especially right now, as we're all very concerned about federal funding. But we want to focus on what we can do in partnership with you as the state of California. And I think we're already pretty encouraged by some of the things we've been able to sign on to so far. Support letters to help you, you know, access more broadband hopefully in the future, as well as some economic development opportunities, which that needs to be the kind of the focus moving forward for, for everyone in these communities is the economic development. So, I didn't bring a lengthy presentation. Kind of my first introduction to Trinity County as a resident of far northern California. And it's also, you know, Assembly Member Rogers introductions to Trinity County. And I really want to extend again, another thank you to Assembly Member Cox for helping me to connect with a lot of the most important community organizations that I will have the privilege of meeting, such as the Community Resource District, correct? Resource Conservation District, the Office of Education. I've already actually met with Superintendent Rolles, but I am excited to meet him in person, as well as going out to see some other watershed-related projects with the Yurok Tribe and everything else that I'm very excited to learn about Trinity County today, as well as hearing from you, because that's sort of the most important role I play right now is to hear from your community about your concerns and bring those back to the assembly member. What I did bring today, I did bring a packet for each of the board members. I don't know if it'd be better for me to hand it to your clerk. So, I have a packet with my business cards for each one of you. What I wanted to go over today is a few of the bills that the member has introduced this session. The first one, even though it affects the Klamath Basin, which the Trinity County is not technically in, I think we can all agree that the effects of climate change, particularly, particularly around wildfire season and just managing our water supply is concerning. And Assembly Bill two sixty-three, it is addressing specifically the Scott and Shasta River in-stream flows related to regu- flow regulations that can only be adopted during certain droughts. And this has happened several times in the last decade. And basically, once the drought emergency is lifted, so are these flow regulations, which is create an effect of inability to properly manage and anticipate what the flow levels will be like. And this affects everything from, of course, we are concerned about the fisheries and the tribal access to the salmon. But this also has a great impact on climate management in general. And I think as we all continue to endure more concerning fire seasons and crushing insurance rates that are now resultant from those fire seasons throughout the entire state of California, I think it's in everyone's best interest to consider how we can best utilize our management of our watersheds to help us fight climate change and manage our entire watershed system for the advantage of everybody who lives in the community. The, we do ask that the board consider supporting officially as a county this bill. That would mean a great bit, bit to us. So, and of course, any questions that you may have, I look forward to fielding. And if I cannot answer them today, I will, of course, come back with an answer when I can. So, that is the first bill I brought to you. The second bill is AB three thirty, kind of in the weeds, extension of the Local Prepaid Mobile Telephone Services Collection Act. Basically, what this is doing is looking to preserve a revenue resource for small communities. This is a tax that is currently levied for prepaid mobile telephone services for charges collected by the service providers for nine-one-one charges paid to the state as well as the local community. And this would just basically make sure that those taxes remain in effect so that they can be collected as a revenue stream. And then Assembly Bill four thirty-nine, Trinity County is lucky enough to often not have to deal with the Coastal Commission when you are planning. But what this does is essentially it just kind of creates a very small change to when the Coastal Commission approves diminished LCP and PMP amendments. It basically removes the ten-day waiting period that just creates an unnecessary burden to progress in these planning. So, that is essentially what this is. Assembly Bill four seventy-two, offshore wind port infrastructure plan. It does nothing more than insist that the governor includes offshore wind port infrastructure planning in the California Infrastructure Planning Act when it is revised every five years. So. And then Assembly Bill five thirty-one, in continuing our efforts to try to recognize that we have to move forward with more sustainable sources of energy as fossil-based fuels become more expensive, as well as contributions to climate change. We are asking that the accelerating germinal power be included as the types of facilities that are potentially eligible for the environmental leadership development projects that the Energy Commission creates. This is, of course, more related to regions in Mendocino and Sonoma Counties. However, we're just looking to expand the energy resources because eventually it does lower costs for everybody in the district, the more options we have. AB six twelve, highway design manual update. What this does is it, we, in particular, there's a, there's a couple of regions in Del Norte County that we are working with their Board of Supervisors on that they have concern about. And the traditional engineering assessments that determine speeds are sort of not taking into place something that I think you might understand, being a community that has a major highway running or a state route running right through your town, is that sometimes that formula is a little too simplistic when you have a community with pedestrians and schoolkids and oftentimes tourists who are pulling over on the side of the road to take photographs of your beautiful river. It just acknowledges that aspect and gives a little bit more direct. Oh, I'm sorry. I was, I'm on the wrong one with road safety. This one, I'm sorry. I know my bill's just not the numbers. This one is about actually ensuring that local governments collaborate with their fire departments when making road changes. And there are some good examples of some areas where that did not happen and it actually created potential community dangers because the fire department was not consulted with. For, for example, in the city of Santa Rosa, a section of road that was two lanes was reconfigured to be one lane in either direction with center islands that prevent a vehicle traveling to an emergency from going around traffic. City Planning Department has more recently begun to include the fire department in these planning meetings. That was just a great example. So, I'm so sorry. I was talking about the long traffic that you know, but when we get there, you have an appropriate background. And again, I think as a community with a major state running through your city, you do understand the need to kind of have a little bit more than just simple, you know, engineering and mathematical equations applied to setting speed limits. AB nine twenty-eight, the Cockfighting Cruelty Act. I think everyone can probably agree cockfighting is prob- it's illegal. We don't want it in our communities. But now with the avian flu, it's an increased concern because of the trafficking of the birds that engage in the fights. So, we are looking to do some more by building upon our role of already fighting against animal cruelty. But we want to, this is already, there are already existing county ordinances that this is modeled after. We're just looking to expand it statewide. And it'll address game foul yards in the state and safeguard local communities by cracking down a little bit more on the trafficking of the birds itself, which will also serve as a preventative measure from having the fighting arrangements established in your community in the first place. Okay, AB one oh one four, state highway speed limits. We've gone over that one. That one is, I think you could see the value in that. I know I had to pull over a couple of times to take some photos of the Trinity River as I got closer to your community. So, you certainly can relate to that particular situation as well of having tourists who you like to have come through your community feel safe on the roadside with the speeds. AB thirteen seventy-eight, preventing tribal children from entering foster care. So, in Humboldt County, we've certainly had some experiences with challenges between CWS and how tribal children are often pulled out of their tribal communities. And it's not often the best outcome in the long run for those particular kids. And this legislation, tribes would simply have the same access to prevent and the same program funding that already exists for other community-based service providers. And it would just allow the tribes to have a little, have a little more oversight over how the children in their community who are experiencing family challenges to, to try to keep them out of the foster system to the best of their ability as a tribe and try to keep those children within the tribal community to, you know, ensure the child's best chances of success in the future. So, and there is one other bill that I did not have fact sheet for. I'm sure it's the one that everybody is waiting for me to talk about, which is Assembly Bill six six six, which is the establishing Bigfoot as the official state cryptid pill. It was originally a spot bill, which means it was intended to be sort of a placeholder for other legislation we were considering putting forth. Which is where it landed. It is viewed upon as this is something that is promoting the tourism of our region. Because we all have, we know we have the rivers and we know we have the mountains and everything that people who are outdoor enthusiasts want to come for and are coming for. But there is also the fun of the lore of Bigfoot and we're just building upon that to just give many of our communities who we all know the Sasquatch silhouette is often plastered all over our communities. It's just sort of building upon that. And do you have any questions for me at this time?
How do you think? Well, thank you very much. Sorry about our audio problems here.
Yes. You know what? It's, let's see what, you know, I've been all over the country, different types. It's, let's see what, you know, I've been all over the country, different types of worlds. There is no event in which technology doesn't give us some problems. It just doesn't happen without it, so.
You are well ahead of me then.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you so very much, and I really look forward to getting to know Trinity County even more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Heidi? Everybody's good?
Thank you very much, Heidi. Appreciate it.
We move on to public comments. This item is for information from the public on matters not appearing on the agenda or within the consent calendar. Should I stand? All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name and for the record and the address board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to appropriate department's follow-up schedule or the matter's subject on subsequent board meetings. Do we have any public comment at this time?
Morning. My name is Michael Palice, and I've been asked to present a letter that was from the members of the Trinity Alps Indivisible. So I just got this letter, so bear with me a little bit. It says, "The President Trump and Elon Musk's plan for government efficiency is already resulting in many layoffs and firing of public sector. The first primary concern is the fact that Trinity County is..."
Hang on one, just one second.
The echo is so bad, we can't really understand what you're saying.
Okay. All right, that sounds fine. Okay, so I'll start over. It says, "President Trump and Elon Musk plans Trinity, President Trump's and Elon Musk's plan for government efficiency is already resulting in many layoffs and firings in the public sector. The primary concern is the fact that Trinity County is primarily a grant-funded county. And particular district concerns are the Department of Forestry layoffs, the question of funding and layoffs of other government-funded agencies such as the RCD, Watershed Center, and Department of Education. These concerns are affecting your constituents, those who have lost and will lose their jobs, those of us who depend on them for doing their jobs, for example, social services, prior abatement, maintaining a recreation industry, as well as all the businesses that rely on income. And a large percentage of your constituents will be affected by DOGE, the Department of Government Efficiency, and the Department and the Trump Administration. The ten to cutbacks will directly affect retirees, seniors, citizens with disability who depend on Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, and their medical needs. There will be no or very little funding for hospitals and clinics. These cutbacks will directly affect our community and rural counties are hit first and hardest. There will be no money for the support of the county and its infrastructure. We can easily become a ghost town. We all know that the $880 billion cut in government programs can result in large cuts to programs on people depending on them. Plan cuts will, the plan cuts, with some already in progress, will be devastating for a large number of constituents. The pain is already being felt, and it is past, it is past time to make a plan for creating a safety net to help people who live or work in the county, which are responsible for, if the bottom falls out. Members of Trinity County Alps Indivisible, in conjunction with the... All right. All right.
Good morning, boards and staff. Ben Kellogg, Weeville. What did we all do when we woke up last Wednesday and opened up our paper? Another hit to our economic development. Cannabis variance continues to haunt county. A completely legal, longtime cannabis farmer gets his yearly variance denied. This person has been a longtime cannabis farmer, and now we are hollowing out cannabis from the inside out, not only from the outside in. This is absolutely unbelievable. My mother always told me, gauge a person's worth by what they do, not what they say. We continually hear from the county, whether it's planning, whether it's the Board of Supervisors, that we don't consider ourselves anti-cannabis. But you are, because what you do makes you anti-cannabis. Why in the world would you deny a variance from someone that is coming in just because a new neighbor comes into the neighborhood and doesn't like cannabis and complains, and then that farmer's variance is denied, costing him hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars? This is absolutely ridiculous. We need economic development in this county. Whether or not you agree of cannabis, it's legal. It's legal in this county, and things need to change. The ordinances need to change. And waiting until 2026, when we start putting out our new plan, is not going to work. The county needs to work on all their ordinances on an ongoing basis because we literally cannot wait another year and a half or two years. You're costing people's livelihoods. You're costing the county money, and it's time for a change. Please do what you say and be pro-cannabis, or at least neutral cannabis and not get in the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to, unless anybody needs a break here. You good? Let's go with the portion announcements, and we will start with reports from department Then we will move on to the CIO officer.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few items. Is to address or just to provide a comment for board awareness that the Planning Commission did in fact hear a ordinance adjustment to address the last public comment you just heard. That happened on the 13th of March, and it will be coming forward to this board in the near future. Other items on the SRS topic, we've been tracking that in this forum. And as of the 14th of February, Representative Lamafa introduced House Bill 1383, and we provided a letter of support for that. And Congressman Huffman and 41 others have now co-sponsored that bill. We continue to partner with TCOE and Trinity Alps to provide support for this, this bill. The appropriations bill was not part of the recent continuing reservation that was just passed, so work still continues to get the appropriations passed for SRS. I attended the PRISM Board of Directors meeting virtually. All JPA participants are experiencing increased in rates and amounts of claims to some degree. We had some deep discussion about overall, the overall insurance market and different exposures companies are facing with the large disaster events. There is a focus on training and information sharing amongst all PRISM JPA members and with the attempt of, you know, reducing the overall frequency and magnitude of claims. There's starting to be an uptick of artificial intelligence use within the county staff, and we're bringing, we will bring forth in the near future an AI policy for board consideration. Some counties have already implemented a policy at this point, and based upon our usage, it makes sense for us to introduce such a policy, so we'll bring that forward in the near future. Last Wednesday and Thursday, I attended a CSAC-sponsored event, a regional event on disaster recovery down in Butte County. The focus was on wildfire response and recovery. We did a tour of the campfire footprint, which includes the Town of Paradise. We heard from their Fire Safe Council's Public Works Director, some community nonprofits, and discussed the overall reconstruction process, the effect on building codes, the some code enforcement aspects, the reconstruction barriers, and some programs that were put in place. Then we heard from the California HHS Director and then a panel of county supervisors from various counties who were represented. There's seven main focus areas and 21 specific topics CSAC is concentrating on this year from a legislative perspective. I was able to share some of our specific examples and challenges associated with the timeframe from disaster to, to actual requesting some of the funding, and that was echoed by a number of other counties, and that topic is one of the topics that CSAC is going to try to bring forth and make some legislative progress on. So more to come on that topic as CSAC focuses on that this calendar year. But overall, it was a good, good meeting, lots of good contacts that we have across different counties when it comes to disaster response. And that's all I've got for you today.
Thank you very much. We will continue on with reports from the Board of Supervisors. I'll start out with District One.
Okay. The first item is the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I attended the board meeting in Murfrees, California. I did ask about Trinity County's status in that organization because we were the only county at this point that was not considered like project funded, funding ready. But I did learn that we actually are all, the Watershed Center is leading the effort, and they are working on a significant project that will quickly bring us to that place so that we could be eligible for funding through that organization. So the people at Sierra Nevada Conservancy were very impressed with the project that's underway here in Trinity County. Firenet, I imagine we'll hear more about that from Supervisor Cox since she sits on the Fire Chiefs meeting. But I did want to share that I heard from local volunteer fire department personnel about concerns with the emergency communication system. And so that was brought to the Fire Chiefs, CIO, Sheriff, and Supervisor Cox as our representative on the Fire Chiefs Association. And I know there's been follow-up action, so I'll leave that for Supervisor Cox. NORTEC, which is the Workforce Development Group, I joined the RFP ad hoc committee to finalize a review of proposals and want to share that NORTEC will be moving forward with the same three service providers that have been serving the region for the last four years. And that means for us, the Smart Workforce Center. So I just wanted to clarify that since that had been an outstanding item. On the housing front, following our Housing Element session, some representatives from the Human Response Network reached out to share information about their housing-related services, just trying to make sure that as a member of the board that I was clearly aware of the services that they provide and didn't provide so that there wasn't any confusion as we look to what we need in housing. PSA Two, which is the Area Agency for Aging, Supervisor Cox and I attended that meeting yesterday where Supervisor Cox was for, I think, the fourth time elected as the Chair of the board. Thank you for that. Tourism, I did meet with CIPATAS representatives, this is the consulting group regarding our contract. Because we had a delay from an agenda standpoint, they were willing to make an adjustment. So we did get a little bit of a reduction there. The second meeting of this advisory board was canceled, but we will pick back up at our next regularly scheduled time, which is Monday, March 24th, from 3:30 to 5:00 PM here in this Weeville library conference room. Elected officials, we heard from Heidi McHugh earlier today, and I will be joining her for two portions of her agenda while she's here in Trinity County with SCED, which is the Economic Development Organization for our region. The strategic plan that I'd been working on with them, we finally moved that to an ad hoc committee because it just needed more time than we could allocate in the board meetings. First meeting for that will be this Friday in Reading. And the Redwood Coast Region Economic Summit, I wanted to note that I'm working with a group there to finalize plans for this year's event, which will take place in September. And I mention that because while that region doesn't often come to mind as directly supporting Trinity County, we do benefit from a number of things that they work on. So I am attending, are working with that planning committee on that program. That's it.
And District Two?
Right. Thank you, Chair. I did have out-of-county travel to report. I had my quarterly meeting with Forest Supervisor Rachel Burkey on the 7th. The NorCal EMS, which was a nonprofit moving forward to a JPA, is something that this board fully supported. We were the fifth of the five counties, and so there were four meetings in order to accomplish that transition, open and close sessions for both the nonprofit and the new JPA. And so that's on track and accomplishing the objectives that needed to be, provide abilities for that executive director, which she now will have. So thank you for that. For the Fire Chiefs, there was a healthy discussion of the communication issues that periodically occur within the county. Particular situations where paging only goes out to maybe 70 or so percent or sometimes less of the emergency responders in that area. So CIO Tet Hill responded with service providers to come and look over three of our repeaters. They made adjustments to one, which again, just kind of contributes toward the band-aids that we've been putting on these systems over the last, I don't know how many months, a good bit of time. So the proactive approach to this will be to engage in a repeater-wide analysis of what is going on and how to fix this problem to the best of our abilities with... When, am I still on? Okay. When Senator McGuire came and provided the million-dollar funding, can you hear me?
Sweet.
Go ahead. Just speak louder into it maybe now. It's not ringing. It goes in and out.
Okay.
I can still hear you online.
Okay, great. When Senator McGuire came and announced the funding for the CD Hall renovations that happened, he shared with the Fire Chiefs his hope of securing another $112,000 for our communication systems. So I reached out to his assistant, Nora, who said this was great timing. She appreciated the ping at this moment because she is putting together those processes in place for the senator to do his best. There are no promises, but he is very concerned about this. So the county will take the actions that we need to in order to secure communication safety for our residents. And if that funding comes through from the senator's office, that will wonderfully backfill what will be needed in order to make sure that these systems are safe. PSA Two, whoops, there we go. We did have our first meeting yesterday morning of the year, and welcome to new supervisors from Modock and Lassen Counties. I will again be serving as the chair and appreciate that opportunity. Trinity, as I want to again put out, does have a vacancy on the Advisory Council. Trinity, as I want to again put out, does have a vacancy on the advisory council to this very important group of folks who look into what are the missing needs of the seniors in our communities that are not being provided for. And this is an incredible opportunity to raise those issues in a way that are heard and addressed. So if you or you know of someone who would be interested in serving the community in this capacity, it's not an enormous commitment of time, but it certainly does come with wonderful opportunities for results. The continuing resolution that was passed last week was critical to ongoing services. And so good to know that that is in place. I did participate in the March 6 homelessness ad hoc meeting and I will let the CAO report out on that. And then as far as welcoming our assembly members, field rep Heidi McHugh, we are very pleased to have her with us. I spent a good time of last week putting together her itinerary. For those that she's not able to visit with on this trip, we certainly look forward to that. I squeezed in as much as we could possibly drag out of her in two days. And so she will be meeting with the Trinity County Resource Conservation District and associated staff, which would then reach into our fire safe council. And our collaborative. She will be at Mountain Communities Healthcare District, receiving a tour of our hospital and meeting with the CEO. She will be at the Trinity County Office of Education and meeting with the county superintendent, as well as our superintendent of Trinity High School. She will be enjoy dinner tonight with our CAO and his wife. Tomorrow, she and I get a chance to have our personal conversation, so we'll do breakfast. And then she will have a tour of Trinity River lumber company. And our district ranger will be joining us there. Thought we were going to have Sierra Pacific represented, but unfortunately there was a conflict with his schedule. So but then she will visit with our PUD general manager and receive a trip into the field to look at one of the right away expansion projects. So you can get a visual for what that effort is endeavoring to provide. She will get to see the Weaver Creek project if the weather agrees with us firsthand. If not, we'll see it on a map. And that's with the Yurok tribe and associated there. I can't name the other tribe. Someone please help me.
The Hoopa tribe, probably.
Hoopa?
Hoopa.
Yeah.
You're on.
Noromuk, thank you. Apologize for that. This is Noromuk. And then she will finish off her time here if she's not entirely exhausted by this time. She gets to meet with the TCDC and hear the important projects that they have already been able to achieve and those things that are on their radar. So Heidi, thank you for being with us today and making this really meaningful introduction to hearing what's going on here and seeing what's on our radar. That's the end of my report.
Can everybody hear us okay? Pretty good. I had no out of county travel. I did attend a Trinity County Office of Emergency Services meeting last week. Phil Simi and myself as on that. And you know, it's a great group of people, well coordinated and it needs to be well coordinated. I think one of the bigger takeaways from that, that meeting, and we'll probably see there's a common theme there fairly soon, is that the lack or in question of federal funding is throwing off a few things. Whether it's good or bad, I'm not sure. But there is a question in that group, as there will be in other groups. And we'll have to play through and make the best of it. I also attended the Trinity County Child Planning Council, which is headed by the Office of Education, Fabio Wolves. And again, another very well run group, it's Office of Education there in the county, if that's what you're looking for, Heidi. Can you hear me okay?
A little better when there's no mic.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, I can hear you really well.
And if you have any questions, you can just, if you can't hear anything, just get me at the end if you like.
I know I caught you with OES meeting and then.
So OES meeting is Office of Emergency Services. Phil Simi is the head for Trinity County as the chair. I am also on that. And you know, it's a great group of people, firefighters, local emergency workers. And again, the biggest takeaway there was funding going to continue or not. And that was a theme throughout that, as we've obviously seen throughout the, you know, a few of the presentations that we have in the upcoming months. I also went to the Trinity County Local Child Planning Council, which is put on by the Office of Education, which is led by Fabio Wolves. And we spoke about several things. It's a group that deals with children from your age of zero or one day old to five, to five years old. And you know, a big takeaway from that was, and don't miss this, but it's really a great thing. The Dolly Parton Imagination Experience, which is a book club that offers any child in Trinity County and outside Trinity County, a free book from birth to age five, once you become five years old. You'd not get one, you get a book a month for every child in your family. You keep the book. And they're all age appropriate. I think the youngest child in there was 39 days old. And the oldest one in there is just about to expire and going through his fifth year and that will stop. But it's unbelievable to me that that institution can give away a book to every child between zero and five for free that they'll keep every month, twelve months of the year. So people should take the opportunity to get hold of me, get hold of Office of Education. It's a great thing to get kids reading early. And they get to keep the book. And say more about that. We're also a TMC meeting tomorrow, which is the Trinity Management Council. You talked about the Shas and Scott River earlier. They're how did we, they have a restoration program there. We have a restoration program here. The TMC oversees restoration to Trinity Management Council. And that meeting will be tomorrow. It'll be virtual only because of some dietary cuts. And we will present some of our county stances there. There'll be a couple of things that we need to vote on. It's a pretty important deal there for the Trinity River and the restoration efforts that we have going on at this time. We also, I will also have a town hall a week from tomorrow, the 26th, at the Roderick Center in Hayfork. We'll start letting books in at 5:30. We will begin the meeting at six. And there is no end time to the meeting. We just go till they're done. It's pretty informative. It's a nice open forum. You don't have an agenda to show up and tell me what's going on. I tell them what's happened. Off we go. It's very informative and a casual situation. And I enjoy doing a lot, pretty well attended. And that would be it for me. Say it again. 5:30 next Wednesday, the Roderick Senior Center in Hayfork, California. Once a month. Generally in the first, also the third Wednesday of each month. Be not in conflict with the fairgrounds board meetings that they have there. And I think, if you don't know, I think the fairgrounds in Hayfork are in their 102nd year this year. It's the county fair. Huge endeavor for us and obviously over a century old, so onward and forward that tradition. It's a great group. And if you'd like to meet any of those folks, let me know. And I don't mean to talk personally to someone in the audience, but it's kind of a different situation here. Heidi, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready? I feel like I need to, why is mine first? Okay. Well, I went to NACO. That's why I was absent last meeting. Started out the National Association of Counties, for those that don't know the acronyms. The first meeting I attended was Public Lands, was an all day meeting. It was very, very informative. We had the opportunity to hear from many speakers of Congress men and women and also representatives of different folks who are in public lands states. I was very pleased to hear both from the leadership in the Bureau of Land Management and with the US Forest Service that they are feeling very confident that many of the dollars that have been set aside for forest sand thinning, fuels reductions, fire wise types of things will begin to come out of pause and start hitting the ground either in their original allocations or perhaps under different names. But they were both very confident that we will be ready for our fire season and we will also be ready to do those fuels reduction projects that have been on the books where federal funds have been given for those. So I think that will settle some nerves. Hopefully we start seeing some of that happen quickly. It was very, it was also a topic of my personal concern. I'm always interested in range because that's my background. So it was very nice to hear them talk about some new projects that they're going to be doing with the feral horses and burrows projects and increasing adoption opportunities. There just seems to be a lot of good things happening in terms of thoughtful restoration of some of older projects. And then also forward thinking by both of the gentlemen who represented, represented those agencies. I also attended the California Caucus. One of the things that I wrote down quickly out of that meeting is the push to have electric cars begin to pay their fair share to DMV fees to support our roads and transportation as, as we do in our gas tax. So they're trying to figure out how to make sure that, that our electric cars are also contributing to our transportation needs. It was, it was just very informative. I will share deeper notes with the, with our CAO and share some of the other things that came out of that. I also attended the Rural Action Caucus meeting. That was really, it was, it was very interesting, a little bit scary and then a little bit exciting on the topic of AI. And I hope to set up a meeting just to make sure that there was, there's already a lot of very scary stories coming out of county use of AI across the country. And I people inadvertently uploading data and information to help with writing out reports. And then that information gets captured by AI and then it becomes embedded into the brain of it all. And so we just need to be very, very careful about that. And they shared some great stories of how it's going to be able to help us be more efficient. So I look forward to providing just some resources to the RCAO with that. Rural development was also a huge topic in the Rural Action Caucus around housing, exploring ways to develop housing faster, working on zoning and then making sure that the homes that are provided are the homes that are needed. Not just build a house for the house sake, but how do we build houses that best fit the base, the standard economic availability, economic standards of the people that live in those counties and places. And there was an enormous and wonderful, two presentations on business development. I will be providing Supervisor Wiler with the studies that were demonstrated to show the connection between health and wealth and in how those are very often married together. The healthier your community, the wealthier your community. And then also the situation that everyone is having in terms of our mental health concerns and drug addiction, alcohol addiction, domestic violence, and just the inability for us to, to know that our citizenry are safe in their own homes. And conversations around how do we begin to deal with mental health folks who housing isn't something that they want to or maybe not want to, but that isn't provided in such a way that works for them. And then I attended the tribal policy intergovernmental relations meeting. That was nice. It was really interesting to hear and understand the way other counties and states work with their Native American tribes and how they're building those agreements. I attended the National Center for Public Lands meeting. That is up and coming. The gentleman who's going to be leading that is vivacious and very smart. And he brings to the table an enormous ability to recognize the needs for our public lands communities. And I look forward to working with him through the, through NACO. One of the things that is talked about in the public lands communities and in the large agricultural states is the hope of the repealing of the death tax. It is something that is, is on this administration's checkoff list. And a lot of the folks who want to pass down those large land holdings that are agriculturally based or ranch based are looking forward to that being repealed and have hopes that it will be. I attended the Western Regional meeting. And of course, we talked about forest fuels, water and fire. Those things all sound familiar to us because it's the world that we live and breathe in. And there is a continual conversation about how do we manage forest fuels, water and fire? And it was, it was great to just have the opportunity to hear from the people who have been put into leadership around those, those resources, talk about their plans. We were able to hear directly from the Secretary of Agriculture. And she's a small town girl born and raised in 4H and FFA and lived in the middle of nowhere. Her mom was the town librarian. And so she definitely has her finger on the pulse of small communities and how important programs like FFA and 4HR. And she spoke towards her desire to help keep food as local as possible and the desire to keep our communities as healthy as possible and to build up our small farmers. And then also to support the working landscapes of our nation. We had an opportunity to meet directly with the intergovernmental affairs folks from the White House. They set aside a room and it was not in a meeting format. You got to speak one-on-one, sit right next to the folks and bring forward a couple of your issues. And they were very attentive. It was a, an opportunity that we had not had in the last two NACO meetings. And it felt very good. I honestly feel like we, like I was heard. It was enough one-on-one time to really feel like I put my notes down in front of the fella and went through them one by one, item by item. And he kept my notes and gave me the card of the people who I need to communicate with. And they're going to reinstate county days for the White House. So that's an opportunity for counties to go directly into the White House and have conversations with the administration. So that was something I think everybody across the, the, the meeting was very happy to hear that county days will be restored. The issues that I asked them to look at specifically were our fuels reduction, forest opportunities for reintroducing a more sustainable timber harvest. And also to just recognize that local communities should have a greater say in what happens with our water. And then to consider the idea of leaving open fire accounts in order to deal with the long-term negative impacts that we know are directly a result of a fire that came through. That was the three primary things that I, oh, and the tribal recognition process. I was very fortunate to have made contact with Jamie Green while he was back there, our superintendent of schools, and joined forces with him and pounded the hallways of the House of Representative Offices and the Senate Office to directly ask for support for secure rural schools and the payment and live taxes. That was a very fun and exciting opportunity and I was really grateful that I got to walk hand in hand. hand in hand and, and do the work in that. And I hand-delivered the letters that I was sent to hand-deliver and spoke with staffers and just really tried my hardest to add personal story to the, the, the depth and the breadth of our need for Secure Rural Schools and Payment in lieu of Taxes to make its way through. Ran into Ted Cruz in the Senate, and I shook his hand and said, can you please make sure that you, that you support Secure Rural Schools and Payment in lieu of Taxes? I never missed an opportunity. If I got to shake a hand, I said that. And so I'm grateful. It's just really an amazing opportunity to walk the hallways of the people's government. And I was, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to serve our community in that location. I really enjoy federal level work and I'm, I'm very pleased that, I feel like I, I feel like I did my job while I was there. So thank you for that opportunity. On a local note, I'd like to celebrate that the Salier Volunteer Fire Department got a new, brand spanking new truck in their fleet. And that's a very exciting thing for our little bitty fire department down in Salier. So thank you guys for listening to my report out. And I will be making a meeting with CIO Tuthill to hand-deliver some of the, I know Rick does not like paper, so I will be sending him links to the, to the, I'll be sending him links to the resources on community development and business. Thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate that. District Five, Julia.
Okay, so thank you very much for that, Heidi. That's a really wonderful thing to hear, all the things that are going on at the federal level. Those are really interesting for, for all of us for roads and things like that too in District Five. So thank you for going. I'm settling in, in this new role and meeting with a lot of different department heads and getting a lot of wonderful information and figuring out exactly how to approach the problems that we've got. And every single department has been wonderful with me on some ideas that I have going forward on issues like solid waste, zoning and building permits and streamlining. Ed, Ed Presley is, has met with me shortly and will meet again on some ways we can make things a little bit more, make them easier, the building process easier for people and faster and allow for more building to happen here. The solid waste, I met with Diane and we were discussing issues with our, our solid waste that we have up in District Five with older bins and some issues that the, that the people working there had. So we'll work, we'll work slowly and diligently at getting improvements done to our District Five garbage, solid waste bins. And also I went to the Ruth Lakes Community Service District meeting, and they, they discussed issues with me with the, the mussels in the lakes. And they're, they're addressing all of those, the laws and rules and regulations coming up with the, with all the new shells and, and mussels in the lake. And we've been very fortunate that we haven't had any problems in our lake at Ruth. So knock on wood with that, but they're doing a beautiful job up there with recreation. And we love working with them and the campgrounds. They are an instrumental part of our recreation in District Five, and we hope to have more as we build on our road systems, which is, we're working on. The CIO and the DO and, and Ponyos Kokas have been wonderful trying to listen to my ever never-ending problems with our roads in District Five. So we're, we're meeting up there for a tour, which will be really interesting and wonderful to do, to see how things are, are, can progress up there. I'm hearing good things with people interested in the Sheriff's Department. And so hopefully we can move forward with some wonderful young men getting involved in safety where we are, because we desperately need some presence there. And so thank you, Tim, for helping with all of that. Appreciate it very much. Post Mountain had a meeting scheduled for the PUD, which is the Public's Utility District that they're trying to put together in Post Mountain with Blong and the head, the, the Board President. And we are working through the issues. The meeting was canceled because of weather, so we will reschedule that meeting. That's very important that we move forward with that. So, and I'm, I'm really optimistic there. Let's see, I've got two towels, two town halls coming up. One on the last Wednesday of every month, so this coming Wednesday on the 26th at 5:00 at the Community Hall in Mad River, and one in Zania on the following Thursday, the last Thursday of every month at 5:00. And we have a really good, a group of people getting together to just tell me what's, what they'd like to see. And it is, it's amazing to see them talk to each other. I'll be hopefully inviting some people to come and talk to, at those town halls, which would make it really interesting. And I think, hopefully we can get fire safe up there this, to one of our meetings coming up. So we're hoping to have you, you up there this coming Thursday or Wednesday in, but I'm not sure how that will work out. So we are, we're moving forward and people seem to be pretty happy with the progress so far that we're making, and we'll continue to push forward. Well, thank you very much and no out-of, out-of-town travel.
Julia, thank you very much. And we'll move on to reports from AdHoc, CIO Tuthill, homeless encampment.
Thank you, Chair. So the AdHoc met on March 6th. There was an update on the multi-organizational camp walk that took place, and some good feedback was provided. Another camp walk is being planned for next month. There are some community engagement and outreach efforts in planning stages. The AdHoc comments on the draft ordinance are being consolidated, and the group will conduct a final review at, with, as part of the next AdHoc. And then the ordinance should be ready for initial board presentation and consideration. There has been some good progress on the vegetation management efforts that Cal Fire crews are conducting on county property. As weather permits, there is still work to be done around the Lance Colts and Brown's Ranch Bridges. And the next AdHoc is scheduled for April 10th at 2:00 PM in this room. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do we need any, let's take a five-minute break, and we will come back at 10:45. Right, so we all good? It's 10:45. We're back to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that would be acted upon by the board as one body. Rule call motion, if a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment in the room? On Zoom?
No raised hands.
Would the board like to pull on the items?
Yes, I would like to pull item D1.
D1, okay. Anybody else like to pull anything? Okay, then let's make a.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Got ahead of you.
Go right ahead.
I would move approval on the balance of the consent calendar.
I will second.
Do you?
Supervisor Carpenter?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Littweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
And we will talk about first item that was pulled, Supervisor Littweiler, item number one.
Okay, so D1 is Board of Supervisors appoint Ben Reed as District Five Tourism Development Advisory Board Member to serve a three-year term expiring March 2028, no fiscal impact. And the reason I wanted to pull this was just because of concerns with this individual's ability to interact digitally. And I just want to make sure, once we present this, I don't want to get into discussion about it. I'm just giving the reason why I pulled it. So I guess we need to, at that point, go back to if people have questions. Otherwise, we can go to public comment and then motions and discussions.
Okay, are we ready for discussion?
Do I need to make a motion?
Sure, yeah, it sounds like there was no public comment, so I guess we could take a motion.
Yeah.
Do you have one supervisor?
Do we have any public comment? No.
I'll move that we accept the nomination to the Tourism Development Advisory Board for the point of discussion.
We have a second?
I, I will second that for discussion.
Okay, and, and I will make a motion that we reject the appointment of this individual to the Tourism Development Advisory Board, and I'll explain during discussion.
Okay, I'll second for discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so now we can have discussion on both items. We just need to vote on the second one first. Okay. So, you know, this board, I, I don't even know this individual, so it's not personally about this individual. But even the communications that we received of his interest had to come through somebody else because he does not do email. And so we have meetings every other week. I've had to use online platforms like Doodle, which is an online polling platform, to find out when can people meet. We share a lot of information electronically with each other and, you know, not in a brown act violation way, but getting information out so that it can be considered and digested. And we'll have some AdHoc committee work that'll be done. And I just struggle to understand how someone that is three and a half hours away, doesn't do email, can truly be a good participant in this program. So that, that's the only reason that I felt that wasn't a good match.
Understandable. I, I don't know the individual either. And, you know, first thought that came to my mind, we could ask Julia, that's a brown act violation.
Now, now you can ask.
No, I mean, I can, but I, if, if we asked her to help him, that would be me, you, and that would be three, that's a brown act violation. First thing that caught my mind, we'll have Julie help out, and you can go over there. But, you know, without knowing the person or any of the, you know, if those things are all true, I, I, I agree. I don't, I don't know how you're gonna, it took Julie four hours to get here. Are you looking at eight-hour round trip drive for a, you know, one and a half or so hour meeting? I think that's, I think even if you're, well, if all your clocks are both placed in the beginning, I think you run out of gas there a little bit. You know, eight-hour drive for an hour and a half meeting every other week is a lot. So I, I would support you on that.
What do you say, Julie?
Okay, so he is far away.
And the woman that you, that you emailed through for him has said that she would be very happy to help him with any kind of emailing or communication that needs to be done, he wants to be a part of this. So my, um, I think we should give him a chance. And if he can't do it, then we, then we decide, but I don't, I don't think it's fair to stop it now.
Is there a possibility for the meetings to move around to each district? So that not every district is asked to come to Weaverville for the meeting? Is there a possibility for that?
Could be.
It may be, it may be of good use for the folks who are working on development to see the areas that they're developing and have a better understanding of how each one of the communities is seeking that. So that might be an option, not that that would help this fellow with every scenario, but it may be an option to move the meetings around physically to each district.
Sure.
Because it's, it's, it's one of the things that's super hard for me is that, that things often, because this is the easiest place to meet and the place that has the technology, it's, it's a constant, enormous gravitational pull for everything to be done in Weaverville. And people who live far away, like my folks in Hyam Palm and even in West County, and certainly in, in Supervisor Brown's district is far, Brownfield's?
Brownfield.
Sorry, I apologize for that. It's far, and we're always the ones that have to go. So maybe the meetings can move around into each district so that you have an understanding of what you're developing. And then it may give just some, some deeper insight, that's an idea. But I know a lot of people don't have the economic capacity to have their own laptops, their own printers, their own scanners, but that doesn't mean that they don't have a voice that needs to be heard. So I'm, I'm with the individual being approved for this. And we make reasonable accommodations for people on a lot of levels. And it may be a challenge, but that district needs to have an equal voice and equal opportunity.
So Heidi, if we did adopt that rationale, it means still without the communication or the lack of communication, even if helped, we'd still not be able to meet for the five meeting obligations as, as it stands right now?
Is that the case? He can't, he has no ability?
I don't have any knowledge of that.
To driving here, just for the meeting.
That's what he said, and if, you know, I, I agree that it's, it adds another layer. He might be able to help, but he's very good at what he does, he adds a lot, his business adds a lot of people, community, so I'd like to see him given every chance possible to, to do this.
Go ahead.
So.
Stand a second, John, have a seat for us, this is the second one we discussed, if you would, thank you.
So I would say, I'd just add to the conversation, that when I have worked with the TOT partners over the last four years, it has been challenging to communicate with this gentleman and his wife. But they are the pillars of what the South County's economic development initiatives or, I don't know that initiatives is the right word, because I can't speak to what they have and have not put forward, but certainly the concerns and the interest in it. So while communication is challenging, one thing that I did as an idea to combat that, it was not a Brown Act violation, I got communication to them through the District Five Supervisor, one-way communication, and then they were responsive. And to Supervisor Carpenter Harris's point about moving the, the meetings around, we don't pick up and, we pick up and go to DC when we need to engage with what's going on there. Weaverville is the county seat. And so wherever you live in the county, I would expect that there would be an expectation that if you're going to engage in governance types of activities, you would, you would understand. I choose to live here, but I realize that that's where government business takes place. If he's willing to drive and he wants to participate, I, I support that. But I would think that it would be, I didn't know until today, he's made the commitment to drive here to the meetings, is how it is. Okay, with that, I, I would support having him be the representative of that area because he seems to be the one with his finger on the pulse of these issues in the, in the community.
I, I will withdraw my motion.
I guess I have a question for you, Rick, as the chairperson of the standing attendance, staying on the.
Yes.
Yeah.
The bylaws do indicate that if you miss a certain number of times, you can be taken off. Yeah.
Okay, I would make a motion that we adhere to those bylaws and.
Well, I think the.
That motion's on the table.
Motion's already on the table for approving them, so, yeah.
I would second.
Yeah, and I think the.
Seconded.
So the only thing I would say to the point about the shifting meetings around, I'm not opposed to that at all, but what, because they are Brown Act related meetings, then we have to have a place that has, yeah, all the capabilities that we have here, which is not always available elsewhere. It is, it's, it's a, it would be much, much easier to ground that control at committee, but, or board, but it is. So I guess we're done with discussion at this point.
And the motion that we have on here is yourself.
I know, Heidi made that motion with your second.
Did John say something? Can John?
Yeah, please, John, please.
I have, I have worked with Ben, but I have worked with Ben for the last fifteen years. And he comes to the meetings all the time. If I had, if I had known this was an issue, I would have had public comment, but I have no trouble having communication with him, so I, he's, he represents HTRA at the Chamber, at Trinity County Chamber, so he comes to Weaver all, all the time, so I highly recommend him.
Thank you, so keep in mind, John, as a chair, I couldn't let the whole world come up there and do what you just did. So next time, if you have that information for him, understandable, but if it was not you, what would I do?
Is the ceiling not fine?
Okay. That's the way it is, okay, should we, could you read the motion, please?
This is for, to accept. When Ben Reed is District Five Tourism Development Advisory Board member to serve three-year.
Aye.
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 You. Move on to county matters? What about Sharice? Is it? There.
I've been asked nuts.
You can hear us. Okay. Okay, we will go on by need public hearings, solid waste, conductive is scheduled fees, the waste disposal can provide for appropriate exemptions and credits for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six annual solid waste parcel.
Good morning, Diane Rader, Deputy Director of Solid Waste. We got him before. At a hundred dollars per unit, which is remaining the same as it has been in past years, it has a fee per residential unit. Calculated by how many residents there is for a waste transaction. This fee helps support the post-closure maintenance of the long building. As in, changing the tipping fees at the gate. That is, that's it, and some taxes and public hearing.
Does, have any questions? On. Close session.
Do, do we have a motion on the public hearing?
I would move we adopt the resolution as presented.
I will second.
Please.
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye. Thank you.
Leah, can you please say Carpenter Harris?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we will move on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed alphabetically by department, a member of the board or public member, that items may heard out of order. F one, clerk of the board, select proposals for the forty-five-day public comment period pursuant to Title III Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of two thousand. Department head present. CEO Tadhill?
Yeah, so our recommendation is, so we receive proposals for the, the Title III projects as you see outlined in the staff report. Our recommendation is we, we present all projects that were submitted for the forty-five-day public comment period. There is a small monetary difference between what we received and what we have available. But I think we can work that out throughout the entire process, and that's why we recommend that all other projects be submitted out for the forty-five-day public comment period.
Does the board have any questions?
I have none.
Go ahead, Heidi.
I have none.
Well, nobody has a question? Bring it back for your motion?
Public comment?
No public comment in the room? Zoom?
Ben?
I don't have a public comment, other than you're having audio issues again for about the last five or six minutes. You guys are going in and out, so if you could speak into the mic, it helps a lot.
Thank you, Ben. We had, that was the only public comment from Zoom?
Yep.
I will motion, I will motion that we support F one as presented.
I will second. Go ahead, Lou.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Brownfield?
F two, human resources. Take the following actions to change the Deputy Director of Behavioral Health Clinical Services to Behavioral Health Clinical Services Manager. Approve the classification title change, approve the revised job description, authorize the Director of Human Resources to update the classification title on the alphabetical listing of classifications, departmental allocation lists, and any other places it may be referenced. And approve a side letter agreement with the management and confidential unit until regarding this change.
Chair, I'm gonna do this one, Leila is at some training today. So this is a currently unfilled position that as part of the Health and Human Services Agency merger or creation and merger with Behavioral Health, this is one of the positions that took the golden handshake. This is not the position of the previous department head, but one of the positions underneath that previous department head. And what you see before you is the desire to create like job descriptions at this level within the Health and Human Services Agency.
Do we have, is that a trend?
Yeah.
Do you have any question for CEO Tadhill?
Nope, looks good. Mine were answered in advance, thank you.
Good. Should we get a motion to approve, oh, public comment in and out? Don't see any in. Do we have any on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Do we take a motion?
I'll move approval of item F two as presented.
I'll second.
Supervisor Brownfield?
Aye.
Supervisor Cox? Supervisor Litwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye. We will now move into closed session. G one, Government Code Section five four nine five four dash dot five C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigations, number of cases, one, Ortiz versus County of Trinity, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number two dash two one C V zero two two four six dash J A M dash G M C. G two, Government Code Section five four nine five four five E, threat to public services or facilities consultation with Trinity County Sheriff's Department. And I add, do you have any public comment in the room on Zoom?
No raised hands.
And we have no report out from last closed session?
There was no closed session last time.
That's right, then I will adjourn.